I'm calling the meeting to order at the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees at 7:30 PM. Welcome, everyone, and we're going to start with the acceptance of the minutes of October 20th, 2020. May I have a motion to? Oh, no, I don't need a motion. Any comments or any questions about the minutes? Okay, can we accept them as read? Yes, everybody, I see people nodding their heads, so that sounds good. Okay, next on the agenda, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Shoray Anon as the Library Trustee to fill the vacant term through June 30th, 2021. Do I have a second thought? Liz, any questions, comments, anything? Okay, can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried. So congratulations to Shoray. We welcome her to the board. We'll be swearing her in at the next meeting in December. On December 17th, I mean, September 15th, December 15th, Shoray has lived in Chapua for 20 years. She has a degree in computer science and a doctorate from Columbia Teachers College. She has an impressive and varied background and has shown her strong interest in libraries, in her work with the Towns Council for Race and Equity, the CRE, and she'll be a great complement to our board. We did have five applicants of highly qualified members of the Chapua Central School District Library Community. So we welcome Shoray and look forward to her filling out all her paperwork so that she'll be official and will, she'll join us at the meeting in December. Next, we have, I want to mention, since we have a new trustee, Nishad has agreed to work with me on planning trustee mentorship and education for new trustees. That is something that I felt was lacking in our, with our board is that new board members came in and they didn't quite, you know, you get the handbook and all the paperwork, but there are lots of things that you need to learn along the way. So it's good to have a mentor. I'll be Shoray's mentor to start. And then Nishad and I are going to work out some kind of plan for future trustees. And along those lines, this week, or last week it was, Andrew and I spoke to Jerry Nichols, who's the co-author of the Handbook for Library Trustees of New York State, and we're arranging to have a, an educational session for our board in, in January. Jerry wrote the book. He also trains library directors and has done a lot of webinars. Andrew, do you want to say anything about Jerry? Since you know him, he was your teacher.
Yep. Yeah, I taught a legal issues class that I took for library, library leadership training. He's a very well-known throughout the entire library industry. I'm sure some of you have seen various articles he's, he's written. You have the trustee handbook. He's very, very knowledgeable about all aspects of library governance. I think he'll be a really good resource for us.
Right. So, and that'll be in, in January. Next on the agenda is committee appointments, where I'm forming a communications committee, and Shoray has agreed to serve on that with Andrew and me, and then we'll be asking some staff. And we'll be looking at, a lot of communication issues came up, particularly with the policy committee and the safety plan and the pandemic policy. Plus, that was something that I felt was not addressed in our current long-range plan, so we'll be working on that. Next is, speaking of the long-range plan, we'll hopefully get that started in, in January, led by our director and Liz Hameson and Nishad. And they will be, they'll be staff joining and we'll be reaching out to the community the same, in a similar fashion that we reached out to find a new trustee. Andrew, do you want to say anything about that? At this point, or did I?
No, you, you covered it. I'm looking forward to starting that in January. And Liz, I look forward to working with you on that.
Okay, and Nishad, Liz and the shot.
And the shot too, yes, sorry.
Get two fabulous board members.
Absolutely.
And then we'll include lots of the staff who've been amazing about stepping up to work on committees, so it's all good. Okay, next on to finance, we have the treasurer's report. Thank you, Dick. Any questions or comments about the treasurer's report? Okay, very good. And next we have the October 2020 statement. Any questions or comments about that? Okay, no. So we're going to now look at the capital fund.
See, Ronnie, I didn't have a question, sorry.
Yeah, I do too, so go ahead.
Um. On salaries, given that we've had, we had some holes in some, for some amount of time. We're not over budgeted by any stretch, but I'm surprised.
Oh, and, yeah, Andrew, am I? Okay, are you, is anybody having trouble hearing me? Because Lane just kind of froze on me, and I'm not sure if I'm.
Yeah, she froze a little bit too. I didn't hear everything.
Okay, I know what her question is because it's something that I, that actually I thought of too. Are salaries, and Lane, correct me if I'm not getting your question, the salaries, even though we had people leave, were kind of still at, at a place where we thought we might not have reached. Is that your question, Lane? As far as expense?
Oh, she just disconnected.
So I think one of, well, I think that was her question, and I, according to, Andrew, do, we, we talked about this a little bit, the, the, the two staff members that left were paid for their unused vacation time.
Correct, yep. Yeah, there was a large payout for two staff members, and then, looking into it, staff, you know, we were paying staff during the closure. It's not like we, we didn't lose any staff, unlike some of the other libraries. So we're tracking very closely. We are at 38% of the payroll currently. The librarian line is at 36%, according to Paylocity. Overall, we're basically on track with where we're supposed to be. It will trend down a little bit with Pam gone and me replacing her. There's a little bit of cost savings there, which was partially eaten by the payout.
Right. Okay, so I think that was probably Lane's question. I just texted her to see if she's okay and what's happening. Hopefully she'll rejoin us. The joys of technology, right, everyone? Okay, I actually had a question. So any other questions about the, she loves connectivity, right? She'll be back, I'm sure. And then we can fill her in on the answer to that question. So anything else about the 2020 statement, the October statement? Okay, the, the review of the capital fund. I have a question, actually, and I've been meaning to ask this for a while. According to this, we have $1,045,136.36. When I look at the, the cash, when I look at the cash balances, we have Westchester Bank operating, we have, well, over a million dollars in that, but I know that's money that we, it's our tax money. And then we have Westchester Bank, 5,840,000, etc. And then in Peoples, we have 250,000 and change. And that, those two amounts don't add up to a million, over a million dollars. I, I see, I don't see $209,000 unless that's in the Westchester Bank. So I'm just wondering why that capital fund money isn't in either one of those money markets? Does anybody have an answer for me? Joe?
Well, I, I think the only answer that I have is that, you know, all of the cash in the banks of the library, it's all fungible. We don't, there's no segregation of capital balance. If you look at the second page of, of the report, the, you know, it indicates that, at the end of, oh, but we have a million nine plus of cash. So if, if, you know, if, if you were to separate the, the capital money, you know, we would have 977,000 dollars left, you know, for operations. We still have another, another million six coming in from the school district for the current, which should, should happen in January.
It, okay, I understand, I'm just, in my mind, I would think that, like, I see that as savings, and so I would think that money, I know all the money's fungible, and, but I would think that that money, that if we have that million dollars, it should be in those money markets, making good interest, as opposed to necessarily sitting in our checking account unless we need it in the checking account to carry over, pay for something.
Right, yeah. Normally, I think that, you know, Pam was around, she might have been more on top of moving the money out of the checking into money market. I was gonna bring this up, but the, the checking is paying interest as well.
Yeah, but it's.
It's slightly less than what we would get in the money market. It's only like a half of 1%, so it's not going to amount to a whole lot.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so I understand that now, and make, because that's $209,000. That's, that's a chunk that half a percent could make. So maybe, Andrew, we have to look at moving some money around.
Certainly.
Okay, and Lane, to answer, I think your question was, or you want to say it again? I think I know what your question was and we answered it, but you weren't, we lost you. So you want to just ask it again, and, and then I think we'll have the answer for you.
That's fine. Again, the question was, we've had some holes in, in, particularly in some of the larger salaries over the course of the last couple of months. And so my question was, given that we're actually, what I would say is essentially on budget, on the salaries, have there been people working overtime in that?
We had payouts for unused vacation time for two of the high-salary people that left, and also, people were still paid when, you know, when, during the pandemic, so, but that's the main chunk was unused vacation time. So I kind of figured that was your question, because that was something that came up when I was looking at this too. Okay.
And then, real quick, because I didn't, didn't, was there a motion to accept the September statement?
I'll second that.
Well, we have to make a motion.
That's what I was trying to find out, if somebody had made a motion.
Yeah, if you want to make the motion, I'll second it, Lane.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the October 2020 statement.
Okay, and Liz is.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I don't know if we have any more discussion.
Right, we have a discussion. So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I skipped ahead to the capital while we were waiting for you to come back. And I have a question about where.
Cash, I forgot that, okay.
You heard some of that, so, okay, so any other questions about the capital fund? Okay, so now we're going to go, move on to the November bills. We have the pre-authorized and then the bills payable. So do I have a motion to approve the bills payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the November bills.
Okay, I'll second. Any questions, discussion, questions about the bills? No, very good. Okay, so, and one of them, actually, just to be clear, that 14,339 to PC University distributors, that is being reimbursed by the Friends. I think we need to, it's, we'll probably have to make a motion to approve that you sign, that you pay for that. Is that, do we, I think we need to do that or not? Because it is over $2,000. And even though it's going to be, it's going to be reimbursed by the Friends.
Yeah.
We, so we need to have, we'll have to have a motion to do that, but do we want to, we can approve the, and then make the motion, or do you want to?
Well, it, it, it's, it's an invoice that has to be paid. Whether it's reimbursable or not is another issue.
Right.
Like, we do need to.
I'm just.
Yes, the same process and then an overlay of the Friends paying.
But I'm just asking, since we have to make a motion to approve Andrew signing that check, we could do that after we approve these bills or go back and.
Well, I don't think we have a motion on the table yet, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made a motion to, wait, I made a motion to approve the November bills. Ronnie seconded.
Right.
And we all, then.
Okay, and we're trying to figure.
Confirm that, and then I think we make a motion to have Andrew sign the contract for PC University.
Well, it's just to pay that bill, to prove the payment of that bill. So let's vote on this.
I think we have to reverse the order, so withdraw, if, Lane, if you withdraw it, then we can approve that one and then.
And then withdraw my motion.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the payment, a payment of $14,339 to PC University distributors for the teen zones. And then who's seconding that? Somebody second? No, come on, somebody has to second. Okay, thank you, Nishad. Any questions? It's going to be reimbursed by Friends?
Yeah. So that, that invoice, I don't believe was coded as being Friends reimbursement.
No, I coded it for Friends reimbursement.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I don't have my codes in front of me, but that was a.
Okay. Okay, all right, I'll need to change that in QuickBooks, though, because it won't be charged to capital.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, so that should be, well, we can make a note of that in the, when we can amend this when we make the motion to accept the bills payable. Okay. So can I have a vote on the, all in favor of the?
Authorization to approve PC University distributors.
Yes, any, all in favor? Aye, okay. Now back to the bills payable.
I remake my motion to.
We second the motion with the amendment that PC University would be Friends reimbursement. Okay. But actually, well, are the programs, I'm now confused. Because some programs are getting reimbursed by the Friends and we.
I don't think you need to, you don't need to mention the Friends in this motion. This is just.
Because it'll come out of the capital. That's where you're going to get the money from Joe to pay for it. And it'll be coded Friends, it'll have Friends reimbursement on it, but it's paid out of capital. And then when the money comes back, it'll go into capital fund, that, or wherever fungible place it'll be.
Right, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll fix it in QuickBooks.
Okay.
And just so.
Go ahead, Liz.
Process-wise, are, Joe, are you, I'm just not sure how, like, whether we have to, whether there's anything procedurally that we mess, where we could improve how we do this. You know, so like, making sure that we're on the same page with this, because I thought we were putting the codes on the invoice, and then that was how you knew what to code it. Is this just a one-off?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look at the invoice to see what was on there.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it. I, I just don't know.
Well, well.
Yeah, I could have sworn I put the Friends reimbursement, but maybe I, maybe I had an error.
Yeah, we'll go back, I'll go back and take a look.
Okay, well, I suppose in the grand scheme of things, this is, this is the process and we're doing it, so.
Everything is kosher and by, so, okay, so can I have, all in favor of approving the November bills payable? Aye, okay, everybody. Okay, so on to buildings and grounds. Who's, Bill and Andrew, you want to, I know the Buildings and Grounds Committee is going to meet tomorrow to survey the, the area, and Teresa, Kathy, Lane, Andrew and Bill will be able to, I have a previous commitment at 3 o'clock tomorrow with my dog, so I won't, can't join you.
I'm, I'm gonna leave the meeting, everyone, unless you need me.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, Joe.
Good night.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so.
Andrew, do you want to lead? No.
I'm happy to do so.
Fence in when you need it.
So let's, the first thing I just wanted to bring up was the roof inspection, or the, the roof testing, so that we could see if the roof is a good candidate for the liquid roofing. I sent out that proposal to everybody today. Price was $3995. Bill, if you want to, if you can explain what that does.
Absolutely. What, what they do is they have to do an infrared, or they call it a nuclear scan of the roof to see if there is water pounding beneath the roof. And for this type of replacement, they're proposing if there's more than 40% damage, it, it doesn't become cost-effective any longer. So this is what that's going to determine if we can go forward with that project.
Okay, and this is with Justin Frye, whom we met. He came to one of our board meetings.
Yes.
He works for Tremco, so since we're dealing with Tremco and that's an authorized agency, we don't need another bid on this.
Correct.
Okay, so, any, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the director, they'll have to change the name in this, because it's to the previous interim director, that, that Andrew has signed this agreement, or enter into this agreement with WTI General Services or the roof moist, roof moisture survey for $3,995. Does that, does that sound good? That's my motion.
I second.
Lane seconds. Any questions, comments, for anybody? No, we need to do this to move forward, so.
What do, what do we think the likelihood, like, Bill, if you had to take a wild guess that we're gonna have less than 40% damage?
You're putting me on the spot. It could go either way.
Doesn't the roof also have, doesn't the roof also have sections? Because we might find that we can do it in one section, but maybe we have to replace another section, so.
That's also a possibility.
Yeah, so by doing it, then, if there's even some sections we can do it in, that will save us major dollars.
Yes.
So it's worth it, yes. I think we all agree it's worth this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for doing exploratory work that helps us save money. That's definitely been my position to date. You've seen that with the parking lot, so I'll support this as well.
They can't, you don't want them to do that, do the liquid roof unless they know it will work, so this is.
Absolutely. We've had so many conversations about the roof that if Bill would have said, I think there's a 60/40 chance, so you're really, you know, there's only a sliver of a chance that this would actually work, then it wouldn't be worth throwing the $3,000 at it, that's all.
Right.
No, I think it's well worth the, the investment.
Okay, so any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried, very good.
I'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
Do you want me to have that proposal reissued? Justin can probably do it in a matter of hours tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, and have it addressed to Andrew.
Andrew, I will.
Yeah, and then we can, we can sign away and they can get going. So let's speed ahead, Andrew.
Excellent. The next order of business are the three estimates for the electrical and data wiring work in the children's and teen areas. Unfortunately, Keating was the only company that gave us all of the information we requested. They both gave us the cost for the cutting through the concrete and running the wire to the children's desk under the concrete, along with a, an alternate proposal for a power pole for savings. So Keating came in right in the middle of the pack. If we did the power pole, they would be the cheaper option, we're assuming, because unfortunately, NK did not give us the power pole option. And Advanced Communications did not give a proposal for running the wire under the ground, but they were more expensive than Keating otherwise. So if we are going with the option of running the, the data lines underneath the concrete and then putting the carpet back, one NK Electronic LLC was the cheaper bid by, I believe it was approximately $2,000, yeah, $2,200. If you decided to go with the power pole, that cost drops by $4,200, and Keating would be the cheaper of the options. I think aesthetically, in a new children's room, running that under the ground is the preferred method, but I can understand, you know, $4,200 savings is a significant savings. Bill, if you don't mind.
Point out, if I could also, that there is another area in that same room where we don't have a choice. We have to use a.
Correct, yep.
So there will already be a power.
This is also for the teen room too, right?
Correct, they're, both, both portions are in there.
Okay, well, I, I think it should be underground. I, I don't like the idea of the pole and having waters out, and it's for aesthetic and other reasons, so.
The, the pole would be next to the new table, correct?
It would actually connect to.
Up into the ceiling.
I, I don't like that.
I, I understand your concerns, Ronnie, but there is, as I said, there's another spot in that room where it's totally impractical to chop the floor, and we are going to use a power pole.
Well, I don't think we should, we should have as few power poles as possible. That's how I.
If you had to add additional power data in the future, you know, we, two years from now, we say we really would need three more ports there, two more outlets, is your, is having the power pole make that easier to add things?
It makes it easier, but not impossible. We can, you know, if there's room in the pipe, they can snake a new wire. It makes it easier, but not impossible. We can, you know, if there's room in the pipe, they can snake a new wire through the pipe that they put in.
And there's, will there be room in the pipe?
Well, we can, you know, we can make sure we put a large enough pipe in, but, you know, I don't know if that's gonna raise the cost.
Can I back up one step and just go back to the drawing board with Andrew for one second? Andrew, can you explain for me one more time exactly why I need these wires? Because I'm just thinking it's, I don't even wanna say, it's almost twenty twenty one. And so me, like, do you really need those big wires there or is it possible that you do?
Yes.
What are they actually?
So the, the Westchester Library System Network must be physically wired. They won't allow us to go on a wireless network to support that. The phone system is also only functional through the wiring. It is the much more secure method. It's a much faster method. You don't run into any potential issues of patron privacy. Hardwiring really is the recommended way, even in twenty twenty. Unfortunately, I wish that was not the case. It would be much easier, but we would need probably five different wireless networks overlapping each other.
Okay.
Even attempt to do it a, a different way.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that. And then we're basically, the difference that we're talking about between these two methods is what percent of the project costs? I don't know if someone has a.
Roughly for Keating, it's roughly about twenty percent. So it's about a twenty thousand dollar bill. It's about forty two hundred, so a little bit less than twenty percent savings for that. One thing just for Lane, so you know, we are running extra wire to each outlet. So even if it required just one plug, we're having everybody pull two. You always wanna do that because labor is the biggest cost in this type of project. The wire is very inexpensive, so we're trying to future proof by doing that. They also only called for six network cables to the desk. I upped that to eight for the same reason. So if we did have to add something down the road, we would be able to do so without having to pull additional wire.
Okay, any, Nishat, do you want to weigh in on this?
I don't know whether this makes a difference, but I personally had my work at home done by Keating. And I just know them from doing good work and the fact that their name is more recognized than the other people. But, um, you know, I'll defer back to Andrew and Bill to make the decision of which one they think would be.
In the, in the past, what, when we felt there was someone who didn't give us the best bid, but we really wanted to work with them, the director went back to them and said, we, could you do a little better for us? So that's a possibility. What we could do, because before I realized that we had, fortunately, all the bids today, I was going to suggest that we vote to allow Andrew to spend X dollars on this project and let him figure out the best way to go with this. I don't know how other people feel about that, but.
If I could put in my two cents, Ronnie, I, I think Keating would be open to that.
Okay.
He wants this job. He's, he's texted me every day asking for results and if the board has met. And then the other thing I have with NK, they submitted their proposal on Friday, last Friday. As soon as I got it, I sent them an email requesting the deduct alternate for the power pole. Heard nothing back. I called them on Monday, spoke with the office. They promised I'd have it. Last night, I didn't get it.
Okay, that's important information.
It is, they've ignored.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, I, I, I appreciate what Nishat shared with us because that's very meaningful. You know, you wanna have the work done and it sounds like, and this should have been done months ago. So if we have somebody who's agreeable and, and, and wants the work and you know they're good. And we've used Keating, I think, in the past.
We have.
So I, I say, you know, we could go with that. So, and that's would be the underground. So doing the underground is nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy eight cents.
I will, I will, if you don't object, I will take a shot at, at Keating Electric and tell them that if they can bring it in for seventeen thousand six hundred.
Okay, I think we need to give Andrew the vote to be able to get this going as soon as possible. I don't wanna have to have.
I think we've done it in the past where he can sign a contract that has a, up, up to adopt, up to the amount of.
So, right, exactly, that's.
And if you can get it for better, all the better, right?
Right, so what I'm saying is, let's agree to let him, let's have, I'll make a motion that we agree to have and the director. And it's, it's not a contract, but.
I think you're, you're authorizing him to engage Keating for the electrical work up to a cost of.
Up to nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
I don't think we're authorizing a company, we're authorizing, we're.
We're authorizing.
To sign a contract with Keating for electrical work up to, not to exceed X dollars.
Right.
We're not authorizing the.
I don't know, can we do that? Because if we had a, if we had someone come in for less, for less than that. I feel like he needs to go, Andrew needs to figure this out because I don't think it's so straightforward.
If you get bids that are, if something is lower, but you feel there's a reason, a good reason that you would take the higher one, Bill gave us a good reason. The P, they didn't come back with an answer. We don't know how reliable those people are, to be honest with you, if, if he had trouble. So you can go with a higher bid if you have a good reason. And we've, we've heard a good reason from Bill tonight.
Yeah, I know, you, I know you're all volunteers and you, you, your time is important. The other option is Bill can reach out to Keating and we could have a, you know, a special board meeting in a day or two after we've gotten that, that new potential estimate and prove it that way. And you don't have to worry about a motion like that.
Right, right. I mean, it's up to everybody else. I just figured we would just let this, you know, I'm agreeable to that. Are the rest of you agreeable to that?
I would prefer it.
Okay, so then we'll do that and then we'll just have a special board meeting to, to vote on, on this, okay?
Excellent.
It's added a good deal, fine. Okay, so anything else from Buildings and Grounds, Andrew?
And just the main thing is that we're going to be doing a tour of the library, start documenting building issues. And then the committee will work on prioritization importance, along with potential budgets so that we know where we stand with our capital fund and can know where we can move forward with our different projects.
Okay, that's, that sounds great. Okay, so that we don't have anything for personnel. I wasn't sure if we would, but that was on the agenda. So now reports, acting president's report, just.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you so much, Bill.
Good night, Bill, thanks.
Going to do is I'm going to text Keating right now.
Sounds good.
And if I can come to a resolution with him, I'll come back on to this meeting.
Excellent, thank you, Bill.
Very good. That sounds like a good plan.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so Acting President's Report, I wanted to, two things. One, mention that the Tuesday after Thanksgiving is Giving Tuesday and that I hope that people will consider either making a donation to the Friends of the Library or people may also just donate directly to the library. It's important. I know there are lots of good causes, in particularly this time, but I feel obliged to mention that it's also important for people in the community to support our library if they can and to join the Friends or make a donation. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Form-based code. We sent a letter to the town. They wrote back to us saying, yes, you can be interested parties. We'll consider you an interested party. And in reviewing the, what is in the DGIS, the generic environment, environmental impact statement, it's very, there's not very much about the library. The school district also found that their report was lacking. And, you know, the school district has hired a consultant and they're paying fifty thousand dollars for them to do the research to see what the real facts will be if such a, a development legislation is passed by the town. I don't know what, I just thought I'd ask what, how people felt about what we should do. We, I know, you know, we could investigate having a study. I, I don't feel we're in the position to be spending fifty thousand dollars on that. I also feel though that possibly there are people in the community did write to us, people who are concerned about the library. I want to be clear that this letter, these letters really were supportive of the library and concerned about, it's people who love the library and what will happen if there's such huge development in the Hamlet and we're right on the edge of this development. So I just was, wanted to know, we can send a statement, another statement to the, to the town board with our concerns. And I just wanted to hear what the others thought about this and what they felt we should do.
Can we, the letters that were written, can we kind of sum up what the people wrote in the letters and then put that in a letter to the town board to include in their public comments?
Yes, I think we could certainly do that. It's, that would definitely, that's.
Kind of buffered by the development zone. I mean, we have Bell School, we have the church between us and where the development would be and then across. It's not. Town and the parking and then you have single family behind us, so. Well, it's, I mean, you know, the idea I think is, and the concern, my understanding is that you could add almost a thousand apartment units downtown and that would add a lot of people. It would also add to our tax bases.
Well, it may not, but it, it could be a lot of.
Right.
To the, to the community and to the demand for our service. People were concerned about the parking and, because if you look at, I'm not, well, I've personally, I have studied this and been to some of the meetings and I've heard the consultants speak about parking. And parking is an issue in this town. We built a, we have a new parking lot and people use our parking lot who don't always, aren't always coming to the library, which is fine. But if this could be an issue with, with the housing, the way, from what I have can glean is that just each apartment wouldn't necessarily have two parking spots per, they would have one point something. And that, there could be like an issue with parking, so that could affect us. These were some of the concerns that people wrote about and then.
I'm okay submitting the people's, people's comment as public comment. I sort of would imagine they would have submitted their own already. But like I said, I, as a whole, I, I feel like we're, we have a buffer zone around us. In most of the comments, I, I felt were sort of around, you know, it'll take away the viewer, the calmness of the library. And with the buffer zone around us, I, I, you know, I didn't see that same effect, but.
They can also sell the, the town property across the street that could also affect us. They could do that. There, there's nothing that could stop them.
Do that today.
Yes, well, but, and that's the point, so that, that they're doing this legislation now. So what, anyone else, Liz, do you wanna weigh in on this?
I, I, I think Nishat, it makes a very good point. Like if we have feedback that's relevant to the town on Form-based code, we should definitely funnel it back to them. I, I think it would be irresponsible not to look at what the impact of development. It's, it's hard. I just got the email yesterday with the, with the big packet, so I haven't read through it in terms of how much information that gives us and how much we could then give back to them in terms of these are the ways that what you're planning would impact us. So I don't know how, I guess I'm, I'm sort of, I'm saying that in theory, I would like to give them the ways in which their plans would impact the library, but without having looked at this, since it came into my inbox yesterday, I can't say for sure how closely that would work.
Right. Are you referring to what I sent you when you, yesterday, the DGIS?
Yes.
We have, well, the, the date for the end of public comments is almost like a moving target. It keeps changing. Right now, their last public session is, I think it's December eighth. And then we, there would be thirty days after that. So it, within that time, we can, I, I can, you know, maybe Nishat, you and I can work on looking at the letter, putting, gleaning what's important for us to share with the town. And then, you know, we'll also, I mean, I've read through the DGIS and I sent you yesterday, just pulled out what they're, what they wrote about the library, but there's, you know, just so that everybody could see that. And, you know, we can then look at the other parts of it and see if there's anything else that's a concern. Does that sound like a reasonable plan for, for us? Yeah, we, we will have time and we can maybe talk a little bit more about it at the next meeting. Okay, so that's it. I, since it's almost Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for this board. I'm thankful for the staff and thankful for the support of, of the community. And now we're on to the library director's report where we see that Andrew has, has had a lot of meetings.
Yes, yes, jumping into the thick of things, as you can see. It, it's starting to slow down, but, you know, being new to the job, there's always lots and lots of meetings. A lot of my report was already covered. The Buildings and Grounds, for the most part, were covered with Bill and I. Did want to let you know that the Armstead Mechanical Services completed the installation of the climate cool chiller compressor. So that is up and running. The heat is currently functional in the library. We will be modifying the reference desks, so the wall between the staff reference desk members will be modified to better meet their, their needs. Or restore the sightline between the two reference staff as well as the circulation department. And we will have a barrier placed in between. The carpenter who built that actually was just in today to meet with me about modifying that and as well as installing shelving in, near the teen area that we need to continue the collection.
Would your, would your plan be to ultimately take down that wall as the pandemic ends?
Yeah, the staff would like that removed at some point, from what I've heard.
Sort of a partial removal now, followed by an additional removal later.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good, yes.
As you know, Jerry unfortunately has retired. She's currently working part-time to assist us while we search. The teen technology has been ordered. Right now, David is, or has just finished painting the teen area with the new color, so it's ready for the equipment to be installed. We're also ordering two new shelving units of the same type as the rest of the new shelves that are lining the outside of the room. They were a little bit short on needed shelf space. Lastly, I just wanted to confirm that we are all in agreement. I'll, I'll read that in a moment, that we're all in agreement about the rolling back the in library browsing for the holidays, going to curbside with expanding our virtual reference phone service and emails until January fourth. That would start right after Thanksgiving. I know we discussed that in emails. I just wanted to confirm that everyone was on the same page as, as us.
That sounds good. Any questions for Andrew, comments? Thank you, Andrew.
Is there any reason why we stop on the fourth of January as opposed to waiting like? Is there any reason why we stop on the 4th of January as opposed to waiting like 14 days in?
The fourth was the consensus date. I would be fine with extending that out for 14 days past Chris, past New Year's so that if there's any continued New Year's parties.
Actually, probably a really good.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want like the fourth or at least, or more like the seventh? Well, let's see, the, the ninth is a Saturday, the 10th is a Sunday. So maybe you go back on the 11th?
That would make sense to me.
That makes a Monday.
Right, because then the first day they have people is Tuesday, the 12th.
Exactly, yeah.
That's great. Yeah.
Okay.
And then do we just, I think we really need to make sure it's posted and people know as soon as tomorrow morning that.
Yep.
The library is changing its hours for the holidays.
Yeah, I've already spoken to the schools who are very willing to help us get the word out along with the town who will include it in email blast. We'll be able to get it on the billboard. We'll send it out with our notices. I'm going to have flyers made up that we'll put in the curbside pickups so that anyone who comes to get checkout material will also have notification.
And can the staff also make sure that for anyone who's actually physically coming in now that they maybe gently remind them that, you know, starting.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And then of course, you know, we'll be doing our own social media posts, the webpage, our newsletter, email blasts, the whole nine yards. And we will be adding a real-time virtual chat to our website. So that patrons are able to communicate directly that way as well. So they'll be able to call us, email us, live chat with us, curbside pickup. You know, we'll, we'll make sure to, to get the word out.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Have any questions more on this? Okay, so now we'll go to the policy committee. Liz, do you want?
Can you give that update? Sure. So we had two policies that we were predominantly focused on the pandemic policy and the financial policy. And then we were working on the employee evaluation, which we will.
Oh, yeah.
That we're going to bring back in January and, and then we'll run with it. But we want to make sure we reviewed it as a group. And then for the financial policy, we sent that out for legal review. It came back. Unfortunately, it didn't come back with enough time for us to absorb all that feedback and, and get it up for a vote tonight. So we're going to bring that one back in the December meeting, right? Hopefully.
Um, I just want to say, there were, the, our attorney made a lot of changes to it. And I, what my plan is, and I, I sent it the markup to Lane because Lane and I, Lane did a lot of work on it with me. She did a huge amount of work on it. And I wanted to have Lane look at it and talk to Lane about what the, some of the things that the.
I took a brief look. It looks like a lot of red line, but it looks like it's more just reorganization than it is actual change. So I haven't had a chance to read it in detail. I just perused it.
Right. And so I figured we talk about it, then we'll bring it to the policy committee to look at. And then hopefully we'll have a clean copy for the December meeting. But it was too much to try to deal with for us to look at tonight. And like I said, with all due respect to Lane, I wanted her to look at it first since we did the, the work on it. So go ahead, Liz.
So that leaves us with the pandemic policy, which we actually are ready to adopt this evening. So I want to make a motion to adopt the Chapel College Library's pandemic policy.
And I'll second that motion. Any comment? It's exactly.
Do we have to read it or?
I.
No, for a policy, I don't.
Do you want, I mean, I could read it quickly.
I didn't think you had to as long as you had it in the publicly available.
Publicly available.
But.
I read it last month. Last month I read it out loud.
Perfect. Yeah.
So it's all good. Any questions? I'm really happy that we're finally adopting this tonight. So do I have, if there are no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so I will, and the date on this is 11/17. We will have it posted on our website. And this is the umbrella for the safety plans that the fabulous policy committee is working diligently on. So that's, that's that. Do we, any, I think that's it, Liz, for the.
I just got an update from Bill. He won't know tonight. He'll know sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
So you keep us posted and we can have a, a very brief meeting to, to deal with that. Do we have any public, I'm looking at the attendees, any public comments? Anyone want to raise their hand? Okay, and we want to thank all of you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, everyone.
If that is, if there are no public comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion that we move into executive session. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to close the public meeting now and we'll be going into executive session. So we'll say something. Dick, thank you so much for joining us this evening. And.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Oh, good night.
And I'm going to stop the recording now. For, and we are returned from executive session. No action was taken. So I'm, do I have a motion?
At 9:34.
9:34, yes. 9:34 we returned. And do I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
I'll make a motion at 9:35 to adjourn the public meeting.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, very good. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
And.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. And Lane, I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah.